So, welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting, November 21st, 2023. I'm calling the meeting to order at 8:03 PM. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we will move on to delegations. And as I had mentioned earlier this evening, there was one delegation listed on the agenda today that will be allocated 10 minutes. Please note that the staff will ring a bell to notify you when you have one minute left in the delegation. So it's now time for a delegation and I'd like to welcome Mr. Wallace and Ms. Scott to the podium. You have 10 minutes to speak and please press the purple button to make sure the microphone is turned on. And the title of the delegation is Port Hope Public Library Board. And, well, let me actually rephrase that. I'll give it the full title. Bob Wallace, Chair, Port Hope Public Library Board, and Margaret Scott, CEO, Chief Librarian Regarding Library Service Update. And I see we actually have one additional person. So perhaps you could please identify yourself for the public.
Hi, I'm Erin Colter. I'm the Vice Chair of the Port Hope Public Library Board.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for having us tonight to talk about our public library here in the community and books and so much more. And we look at our Port Hope Library as your destination for inspiration, imagination, and information.
All right. Great, thank you. So this word cloud is just to show the many things that are going on at the library. Some you might not know about. We're open seven days a week. There's an urban location just across the street. There's also a rural location out at the Hub in Canton. All of our programming is free. We have things for babies. We have baby time and early on, right up to seniors. We have book clubs. We have things for teens. We have some great multi-generational programs such as Techno Buddies, which pairs students from Trinity College School with seniors who need assistance using their smartphones or their iPads. We have a variety of material, not just books. We have magazines, newspapers, ebooks. So you can access the library 24 hours a day. We have free wifi, a number of things there. We just wanted to draw people's attention to. If you haven't been to the library in a while, please drop by. We're open every day, including Sunday.
Thank you, Erin. So yes, many, many programs that we offer at the library. But in addition to the programs and books and things that we offer, we have photocopying and printing and scanning services. You don't have to go elsewhere. We provide that here in town. The other two things that are on that list that are really important in my mind is that the library is open seven days a week. We have accessible washrooms in the downtown area. We are a warming center and a cooling center for our residents in Port Hope at the library, right in the downtown area. The library supports several areas part of the strategic plan for the current municipal council strategic plan. And here are two examples. The intentional growth planning. And that is the conservation of culture, small community values, heritage preservation, agriculture, irrigation, and environmental protection. We are blessed with a heritage building just across the road from us. You can see it out the window in the rain here. And it is a wonderful building with the, to sit in those bay windows with the sunlight coming in and read a periodical or a book or just look out on the riverfront. It's a wonderful place to sit and enjoy the scenery. We have a phenomenal group of staff. Over the past couple of years with COVID certainly, the staff was amazing as far as pivoting and providing services to our municipality during COVID. From in-house to drop-off to pickup in the parking lot, we provided many, many different things. Multi-sector collaborations with the arts, with education. We collaborate with TCS. They provide the technical for Techno Buddies. And the early on is an example as well. The other part of the strategic plan is multi-generational community opportunities. And our priority, along with the town, is a healthy, sustainable community that delivers multi-generational programs, facilities, and initiatives for residents of all ages and life stages. So we're trying to do our best to meet the community needs. As Erin said, we've got programs. We've got baby time. We've got senior program. We've got Techno Buddies. Come and learn how to operate your cellphone or your iPad. We do a great job at custom programming and unique services. If we see a need in the community, we'll adapt and pivot to provide that programming. And we're also very careful in providing rural and urban service provider. We have our downtown branch here, the main branch across the road. But we also have the Hub in Canton that we make use of as much as possible to provide again. The services out there, like the wifi was very much used during COVID certainly, and available books at the Hub. So we try to provide service for the rural community. And my last slide is gone, not there. Anyway, I'll just read from my notes here. The public library, Port Hope Public Library, delivers quality, community-focused library services with a commitment to equitable and open access to all resources. And the local public library is the biggest club in town and it's all free. The library provides a safe, welcoming, enriching experience for those who enter its doors. Supporting your municipal public library is the best investment you can make in a community can make in its future. So thank you very much for your time and we're open to questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation and thank you very much for all the work that you do for bringing this valuable resource to the community. And I'll now pass it on to, I think I had Counselor Les first. And since he doesn't sit on the board, I'm going to go with him first and then I'll go to Counselor Mink.
Thank you. I mean, the library is wonderful. You know, I don't know how to compare it to other libraries, but you're so innovative. You're head of things. Do you still have your lending tools, utensils portion? I have some tools. I don't know how to use them, but you know, you're quite welcome to them. And I think it's, you do a wonderful job. And we're going to try and get Kevin, the other facility filled up for you too.
Andrews, the Library of Things has just been launched about three weeks ago. It's located at the Hub at Canton. And we would welcome all donations, so you can bring your tools along.
Counselor Mink and then Counselor Claire.
So thank you. So I have a couple of questions for you. So I sit on the library board. So I see these numbers regularly and you did come and do a delegation a few months back, but we have a lot of people here today. So could you share with us, and I just asked for this information yesterday, if you could bring it forward? Could you tell us, you said it's the largest club in town? How many, I'm going to just list four questions here. How many cardholders do we have? What's the total number of visitors year-to-date? What's the total programming events? How many events do we have? And what's the total number of recurring events that are programmed events like early on? Could you provide those numbers?
Thank you for those questions, Counselor Mink, and for some notice so that we could put the numbers together. Our total cardholders, so anyone who has a public library card, and this includes urban and rural residents as well as residents of Coburg. We have free reciprocal borrowing with Coburg Public Library and that's been in place for a number of years and it's very successful. We share, as two communities distinct, we do share a lot of things in common and one is a good library service. So 13,059, that's our current total of people who have active library cards. Visitors at the door, we have a counter at the Mary J. Benson Branch. So on average, we have 4,500 people come through the door each month. So as of the end of October, about 44,800 people came through our doors. In terms of programming events, up to the end of October, we had 190 and we had about 4,500 people attend those events. And that includes events mounted by the Friends of the Library and some of you perhaps have taken part in some of those unique events. They've been very active this year. They've mounted three different fundraising events for the library. In terms of ongoing or recurring programs, we have several. Early on, which is a partnership and we host that at the Mary J. Benson Branch, we've had 460 people participate in that program this year. Baby time is something we've just launched about three weeks ago and we have 50 babies and parents and caregivers coming to that program. A program for youth, Dungeons and Dragons. We've had 65 attend that program throughout the year. And then we have a very active homeschool community in Port Hope and the homeschoolers are a regular visitor and we've had 275 children come through that program.
Go ahead, Counselor Mink.
Thank you. So thank you for that information. And the discussions that we've had tonight has been a lot about the budget, a lot about cutbacks, the very difficult times many people are having. We were hearing about more and more people using the food banks and that type of thing. So I think having a library that has free access when families are challenged with cutbacks and having this resource here that's open all the time. You don't even need to be a cardholder to come into the library. One thing you didn't mention is the DVDs, a huge, huge selections of DVD movies as well as current series and so on. And a few other things that weren't mentioned is the fact that the library has a board of directors. They have a strategic plan. There's the library acts, there's the audited finances. So that's a huge benefit to our municipality in so many different ways that we can be assured that this is something that is definitely an asset. One point I did want to make, especially since we have so many people here today representing the rural area, is the Hub. I hear a lot about how everybody loves the Hub. We want to use the Hub, but it doesn't get used very much. And I don't hear feedback, why? So please, I'm asking people that are listening tonight, please reach out to me and let me know what needs to be different to get you to the Hub. I'm happy to hear that feedback.
Counselor Claire.
Largely echoing some of what Counselor Mink has said, I just wanted to say, you know, in this age where there are so few truly free, inclusive community spaces, thank you for being a commons for our community. I think it's a crucial community asset and you provide a crucial service. And I hope we can continue that very long into the future.
And just one last, one last point I wanted to share is during the, some of the vegetarian drop-ins last week, I had one of your members, very active members, I'm not going to name them for privacy issues, but I think I sort of volunteered that we would, I would ask at the council table whether or not in the spirit of some of your innovative programming that we might consider sign out a counselor or sign out a mayor for any of your fundraising activities or special talks. I haven't, I hadn't mentioned that yet at the table, but there you go.
Well, we appreciate your support and interest and we look forward to seeing you soon at the library.
Thank you very much. Okay, would a member of this council like to move to receive this item for information? Moved by Counselor Mink, seconded by Counselor Les, all in favor. And we are carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered collectively as one motion. Council members may request that specific items be removed for separate discussion, deliberation, and action. Would anybody like to remove any of the items listed under item four for further consideration? Okay, seeing none, can I ask for a mover and seconder to receive for information? Moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, all in favor. And we are carried. Now we're going to be moving into our, let me just have a look here. As we have a lot of public here today that are interested in the sleeping cabins matter, which is item 7.2.1 on the Committee of the Whole Agenda, I'm going to propose that we move to Planning and Development Committee first. Do any council members have concerns with the reordering? Okay, so normally I would turn it over to the chairs of the standing committees. But as the Deputy Mayor has seconded this notice of motion, he has requested that I chair the Planning and Development Committee meeting. So Planning and Development Committee is now open. 7.1, Staff Reports, there are no reports. 7.2, New Business, there is no new business. 7.2 point, sorry, sorry. 7.2.1 is actually new business. Notice of Motion Regarding Sleeping Cabin Pilot Project, 3200 County Road 10, Counselor Holloway Woodwanni. The notion of motion, the notice of motion is moved by Counselor Holloway Woodwanni and seconded by Deputy Mayor Attridge. And so it is on the floor for discussion. So I think what I'll suggest is that we move through the council table with any comments and.
Sorry, can I have a point of order?
Sure.
Our unusual process for a notice of motions is to provide the person making the motion an opportunity to introduce it before we move into discussion.
Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So first, you'll bear with me today. I have prepared remarks because I think it's very important to be very clear in the remarks this evening. So first, I would like to thank all the residents who have taken time these past weeks to engage with us through phone calls, emails, meetings, and then joining us here in chambers. My intent in introducing this notice of motion was to move this matter forward into a public planning process where residents would be formally notified through posted signage and where, for those living adjacent to the proposed site, through notices in mailbox and where we would have a fulsome public hearing as outlined in the Planning Act. We at this table have had numerous opportunities to ask questions about the sleeping cabin model and the potential feasibility of this solution in Port Hope and specifically on underused municipal property. We received a delegation in December 2022, passed a motion directing staff to meet with those proposing the sleeping cabins and to bring forward a staff report. We received that initial staff report on January 24th. And after our discussion, council once again passed a motion directing staff to continue their discussions and to zero in on municipal lands that may be appropriate for a potential pilot, including the former George Hamilton School, which was proposed both in the initial delegation and in the first staff report. Most recently, on October 17th, we reviewed a second staff report, which considered four possible locations on municipal properties and outlined the recommendations for conditions that would need to be met to satisfy health and safety requirements as brought forward by municipal protective services, including both fire and emergency services and building services, as well as by county social services. The staff report advised that if this council was interested in moving forward, the next step would be to initiate a public consultation through the planning process prescribed in the Planning Act in order to consider a temporary use bylaw for use of one of the four properties under consideration. If and only if council determined to approve a temporary use bylaw, would staff then negotiate a licensing agreement that would cover all requirements from a land use perspective, including considerations of health and safety. And while there were a few members of council who indicated they'd be up for considering such a motion, someone had to be the one to select the most promising of the four properties. I was encouraged to do that and to bring forward a notice to our next meeting. And after meeting with the sleeping cabin group and hearing the perspectives of some of our neighbors who may be considered for a cabin should the pilot proceed, and after consulting further with our Director of Planning, I identified the former George Hamilton School as the most appropriate for the needs of the target cabin residents and the most feasible for moving through the planning process. And so here we are. I want to be clear that from my perspective, today's deliberation should not be a hearing about the merits of sleeping cabins, nor a discussion about what we feel is the best possible solution for sheltering unhoused residents. The question before us is whether we move forward with the prescribed planning process per the Planning Act to determine whether a sleeping cabin pilot is an appropriate land use for this proposed location. As in, do we initiate a process of official community consultation, including due notice and a public hearing or not? For my part, I support moving forward for two primary reasons. First, we know that the issue of homelessness and affordable housing more broadly is a growing challenge in our community and it's one that we are struggling to tackle together. I trust that our partners at the county are doing the very best that they can with the resources afforded to us through funding from other levels of government. And I know that the teams operating Transition House and the Winter Warming Hub in Coburg, in partnership with the county, are doing their very best to accommodate and provide wraparound support to as many unhoused residents as feasible within the confines of their operations. I also know that our current shelter model cannot meet the growing demand. And I know that a single model of shelter will not meet the needs of all unhoused neighbors, including those with capacity for independent living without intersecting challenges related to mental health or to addiction and are simply in need of transitionary housing. I believe that solving this challenge is going to take more than just government. So when a group of community members comes forward with a potential solution, one that would be managed by a reputable community agency, funded privately by community members at no cost to taxpayers, that has potential to meet the needs of some homeless neighbors here in Port Hope without having to leave Port Hope, is supported by those who would be served by the project while relieving a little of the pressure off our stretched social services system, I think it behooves us to give their proposal due consideration. And I believe the planning process gives this community-led solution that due consideration. The second reason is that this question of how we house people, including low-income neighbors or those experiencing homelessness, is one we cannot ignore. Whether we move forward in considering this particular proposal or not, this is not the last discussion we will be having at this table, nor as a community about this difficult topic. I believe we need to get more comfortable talking about this together. We need practice so that we can deepen our collective understanding of our community's questions and requirements so that we can agree together, and I mean all of us, about what Port Hope's criteria are for moving forward with solutions for shelter and housing options along the housing continuum. I believe a public planning process, regardless of the outcome, will help us in this task. I will also add, for anyone who is interested in seeing solutions but is unconvinced about this one, I'm all ears. And when my colleagues on council seek to advance other more permanent solutions, I am with you and I will champion those alongside you. And if any community group wants to come forward with something else that can be done by community, I will most certainly be opening, open to considering those proposals. But for now, this is the one that is before us. One that has already had a great deal of community buy-in and support, as evidenced by the funds donated by community members, by the volume of correspondence we have received in favor of moving this forward, and frankly, as expressed by many of those who have been engaging with us raising concerns. Many of you have said you are open in principle and support the idea of sheltering those in need, but that you have questions you want addressed before any decision is made that could impact you and your neighbors. I believe you should be given the chance to have all questions answered and not to have assumptions made about you and how you may feel at the end of a process, once your questions are fully addressed. I have great faith in this community and in open, transparent decision-making processes wherein research and lessons learned from elsewhere can be coupled with local consultation and consideration for our specific local context. So again, regardless of what we would ultimately decide about this land use question, I think a fulsome discussion with meaningful community participation as prescribed in the process outlined in the Planning Act is a good bet for arriving at the right outcome for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for that order. I usually don't chair this section. And so I didn't go back to the last point after it's open for discussion. So can we go around now and collect thoughts? Counselor Andrews, did you want to?
Yeah, when I go through this notice of motion, I have a number of questions I ask myself. Is it the only solution? Is it an acceptable short-term solution? Have alternatives being provided to the parties affected? Could dollars spent on this project be better spent on the affected parties elsewhere? And I acknowledge that there is no pathway for temporary sheltering, transitional sheltering, or permanent sheltering. We do not have a solution. So all those things are in my mind as I read this.
Thanks very much and thanks for taking the chair. So I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. As members of council and residents of this community, we share a common goal, to live in a space, sorry, to live in a safe, prosperous, and caring community. And I believe this pilot project will contribute to these goals in a practical and positive way. The issue of homelessness is complex and affects more than just the individuals without a roof over their heads. It impacts community health, local economies, and the social fabric of our town. The proposal for a small, carefully managed sleeping cabin initiative is an important step towards addressing this broader issue in a manageable and low-risk manner. The housing continuum, which spans from homeless to market home ownership, could also be described as a pipeline that helps guide individuals towards stable and permanent living situations. This pipeline represents the progressive stages of housing from unsheltered right through to homeownership. Each piece of the pipe is crucial and without one, the flow is disrupted and people then get stuck in less-than-desirable situations. The proposed sleeping cabins represents a vital segment of this pipeline. It's a segment that serves a very specific situation. The situation that occurs when people simply no longer have the financial means to pay their rent, even while working. As the cost of housing continues to rise, we need to recognize that we live at a moment in time when rental rates are out of reach of many individuals. The number of people facing homelessness is rising faster than the rate at which affordable and deeply affordable housing can be built. And in spite of all efforts, that reality is unlikely to change anytime soon. Sleeping cabins and creative ideas like it are not meant to solve all homelessness. They're meant to be a piece of a larger solution designed to reduce homelessness. Without this piece, we risk individuals remaining in worse situations for longer than necessary, which in turn will cause a deeper strain on our social system and prevent others from accessing the vital services they need. I've learned a lot about the housing crisis in this first year in council and one of the most important lessons I've learned is that this is a game of inches. Every inch forward is a useful and helpful one. Housing one person for one night is better than housing no people for no nights. The sleeping cabins offer the chance to fill a temporary gap in our pipeline, ensuring that individuals have the opportunity to move forward in their journey to more permanent housing. It's a pragmatic solution that benefits the entire housing continuum, helping to keep our entire social system flowing smoothly. With this project, we're not just offering a temporary place to sleep, we're providing relief on an already strained system. As a lower-tier municipal government, we don't have many tools available to help, except for one, the ability to rezone or donate land to make room for traditional and creative housing solutions. We need to face the reality that homelessness is likely to get much worse before it gets any better. Old solutions to new problems rarely work. As time goes on, we will need to become more and more creative in how we address housing if we're ever going to dig ourselves out of this hole. The way we approach land use and development- The way we approach land use and development will need to evolve, because what got us here will not get us to where we need to be. Simply put, moving forward, we will need to make hard choices to solve the real problems we face, using resources we already have in ways that support those most deeply impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the deputy and the... Councilor Clare stated, absolutely, I didn't hear anything from any community member not supportive of giving a housing to anybody. I did not. We talked about holistic issues, and that's exactly what we're talking about. Homelessness is very complex. It is not simple. If it was simple, we'd have it fixed by now. We heard a gentleman come up tonight who brought awareness, who brought education. I wasn't aware. I wasn't educated. And there's positives out of this motion, and I do respectfully challenge this motion. This motion actually says, and it's not holistic, it is specific to a place at 3200 County Road 10. Have we examined the complex issues with that? Now, we can say it doesn't cost the municipality anything. I would suggest to you that's absolutely false. We have labor, we have time, and we have liability. Supreme Court of Canada has just come back in a decision with due diligence from a municipality up in Sudbury, where they didn't exercise it, and they were found at fault. So when we start to house whatever it may be, we have to make sure we have, for lack of a better term, our ducks in a row, because there is liability, there's risk. That risk sometimes equals money, and you've heard it here tonight. We don't have any money, guys. We don't. Plain and simple. With that aside, there are aggravating factors, there are items to consider. This council, through this positivity, again, was brought education and awareness to identified individuals who required care. From what I understand through a meeting two weeks ago, that action was carried through, and it was solved. I've also heard and read a lot of community members, and we have a great community, doesn't matter what side you sit on, and we can overcome our short requirements. I'm confident in saying that. And you'll see the vote here very shortly, but until those answers and the complexities are answered, I cannot be in support of this specific motion for 3200 County Road 10 at this stage. There's just too many unanswered questions. Thank you.
Councilor Adams.
Thank you. So a lot of people probably know that over many decades, I work with a lot of our unhoused individuals day-to-day, including today. I've been on the phone with Transition House, geez, almost daily for the last, like, two weeks, trying to help one of our unhoused individuals get a location, which unfortunately he's burnt a bridge on, so that is not a location for him. So now I'm working with ACT and am working on trying to get him into a different location. This is something that I do daily. But unfortunately, the sleeping cabins isn't necessarily something that is something that I think is a great path forward. I know that we have reached out to the county to get the hotel rooms, which I think are significantly better as an option while we wait for more permanent solutions, which hopefully this council will have shortly. But currently, I'm at a state where I think there's better options, and I think we should use those options, and that's where I am.
Councilor Mink.
Okay, so thank you. So through the chair. So first, I want to say that I appreciate the messages of support. We've received tons of messages of support for sleeping cabins. I've also heard all of the questions and concerns about the George Hamilton location, and I share those concerns and questions with you. I probably have more. As has been stated by other councillors, we're not here today to address all of the many questions in front of us. The question tonight is, do we proceed with exploring whether George Hamilton is the best location for sleeping cabins? It's not a discussion about homelessness, alternative locations, NIMBYism, encampments, all those other topics that come up when we discuss this. It is about that location. If council votes yes, the next step will be answering all the questions that you have. If council votes no, it's not necessarily no to sleeping cabins, it's no to George Hamilton. And I just want to make that clear. It is a very sensitive and important topic, so a no tonight is not no for everything. I commend those who are passionate about sleeping cabins and helping those who are in need. It is you who bring awareness and drive change, and that's not easy. You play a very important role. For myself in this position, unfortunately, I don't have that same opportunity to take one side of an issue with the same level of passion and devotion. I'm obligated to make decisions that consider and balance all perspectives. I've been elected to hear all opinions, and I make my decisions based on what's best for the community now and for the future. I must respect policy, bylaw, design guides, other regulations, professional advice, while balancing human needs, and that's not an easy task for any of us here. It can be one of the most difficult tasks of being in this position, is when we have to make a decision that may be in opposition to our personal values and interests. I do not think George Hamilton School is the best location for sleeping cabins. There's a long list why I do not believe it's the best location. I'm not going to list them. I do agree with all the comments that's been said by my fellow councillors so far, and I'm entirely committed to finding a solution for our neighbors. This is an urgent need. I'm not sure where we go from here, but the decision of sleeping cabins at George Hamilton in particular, unfortunately, I cannot support. And on a side note, it is a very important decision we're making today, and I think we need to give the community clear communication on how we vote, so I will be asking for a recorded vote on this.
Well, there have been so many really important comments and observations made at this table, and I'm going to start by saying that I think that we have absolute consensus in this community about how important the crisis that we are in is. I don't think there's anybody sitting around this table, or indeed in this audience, that isn't passionate about homelessness and the need for more housing in this community, and for ensuring that we do not leave anyone behind. So I want to start by saying that. I also want to echo what I've heard from some of the council members about the fact that dealing with this issue is going to require a whole variety of different options and different responses. I do think, sitting at the county table and sitting here, that I do have access to a lot of conversations that go on around the county's efforts and responsibilities to deliver some of the provincially mandated programs, and being a system planner in housing and homelessness. And I'm not naive for one moment to think that the job that's being done either at the county or at any other lower tier, or in fact of any municipality, nobody's got it right. Nobody's got it right. This is a complex challenge. As Councilor Collins had pointed out, homelessness is more than just about housing. We have a complexity of needs, which often also include mental health supports and needs, which frankly, we do not have enough of across Northumberland County. We fall short on mental health. We fall short on treatment options, and all of those things have to be hand in hand, because often those who are in precarious situations with housing also have a complexity of needs that need to be attended to on a day-to-day basis. And what I can say to you from being a county councillor is that this is being heard, this is being worked on beyond just the status quo, very aggressively. And no, I'm not talking in a year or two from now. I'm talking in very short order. Folks recognize that it is an emergency. I also think that, as a community, we can probably do, and this is part of what Councilor Clare was talking about, is bringing folks better together to have these conversations across the different sectors. We don't have to operate in separate lanes. We have to have more conversations across sectors. Just because somebody sits and works in government or an institution, we're people within those institutions, and we care just as much as others that sit in different places and in different perspectives. And I'm really heartened by the fact that we continue to have a, you know, albeit, of course, imperfect homelessness leadership table. We have a new initiative that's going to bring together different municipalities together to talk about these issues, and I do think we need to have a fulsome community conversation that includes all of the different options, understanding ultimately that we have limited resources and time to be exploring any one of them, and so how can we move together in the most effective and efficient way? We do have a lot going to the deputy mayor's comments. We actually do have quite a few policy tools in front of us, and it's going to require doing things differently. It's also been mentioned a lot of political will, and we're also going to need to draw on the community for support, especially when it comes to providing dignified permanent housing for those that are the most vulnerable members of our community. That is, I see that as one of the most formidable challenges in front of us. But for the reasons that I had stated in a previous meeting here at the table, I'm evidence-driven, and that has to be what drives my decision-making with all of the different options that we need to consider and need to be on the table. And just because that's my position does not mean that I am any less passionate about this issue, or that I continue to press at the county level, I continue to communicate at the county level, I continue to ask for transparency, and I continue to struggle to work in a very imperfect system. I am going to call the vote. So we have a mover and yes, to the clerk.
So Madam Mayor, Councilor Mink has requested a recorded vote in this matter. So if you are ready?
We will be going in alphabetical order.
That's correct, yeah.
Across the table, starting with...
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I can do the recorded vote.
Excellent, I don't have to chair this part. Very good.
Thank you. So if you are ready to call the vote, then, Madam Mayor, as requested by Councilor Mink, and in accordance with Procedure by law, Section 17, a recorded vote has been requested for Item 7.2.1. So we, you know, the motion is on the floor, it's moved by Councilor Holloway-Wadwani, seconded by Councilor Attridge. So we will now, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Attridge, so we will now go in order, and the members will indicate yes or no to the motion that is on the floor. We will start with Councilor Andrews.
No.
Deputy Mayor Attridge?
Yes.
Councilor Collins?
No.
Councilor Holloway-Wadwani?
Yes.
Councilor Mink?
No.
Councilor Pearson?
No.
Mayor Hankiski?
No.
So that's five noes to two yeses.
Okay. Is there any other new business for planning and development? So we will now then close planning and development and move to corporate services, and I now turn it over to Councilor Mink.
Thank you. So if you don't mind, I'll just take a quick pause. I invite everybody to stay, but if you're here for just the topic of sleeping cabins, I'll just give you a minute if you want to swiftly leave, but you're welcome to stay. Okay, so 5.1 staff reports under corporate services, I have none. 5.2 new business, I have none, and I will pass it over to finance and Councilor Andrews.
Thank you. Finance is open, and I have no staff reports and no new business, other than to reiterate what our mayor has said about budget dates, Tuesday, November 28, beginning at 9, followed by Thursday, November 30, at 9 also. Public, of course, is welcome and hope to see you there. Is there any further business of finance? See, none. Finance is closed.
Parks, Recreation, and Culture is now open. Staff report, we do have one staff report, 8.1.1 Leach Service Master Plan. Any questions from council on this? I see none. So can I get a mover and a secondar to receive this report for information? Mayor Alana and Deputy Mayor Attridge, all in favor? Thank you. There is no new business, any new business from council today? I see none. PRC is now closed, and moving on to Works and Engineering.
Thank you, Councilor Adams. Works and Engineering is now open. We do have a staff report this evening, which is Staff Report WE 2423 regarding the Ganaraska Region Conservation Authority MOU, and I believe Director Davidson is able to speak to this in a limited capacity.
The proposed MOU between the municipality and the GRCA is required by regulation. We are required to enter it into an agreement for services provided by the conservation authority as of January 1, 2024, and it is for all Category 1 services, which is primarily what the levy budget is. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Nope.
Okay, seeing none. Then the recommended action is that a bylaw be prepared for presentation to council to enter into an MOU with the Ganaraska Region Conservation Authority. Have a mover and a secondar? Moved by Councilor Chris, seconded by Mayor Alana, all in favor. Carrie, did you? Is there any new business for Works and Engineering this evening? Seeing none. Pass it over to you, Councilor Chris, for Protective Services.
Thank you very much, Councilor Clare. There is nothing new with Protective Services, Madam Mayor.
Well, that went more quickly than I expected. So we have concluded the standing committees, and now we are going to be moving on to Item 11, Question Period. So please remember that Question Period is for questions directed to council, and if you do come up to the podium, please identify your name and ensure that the purple button is pushed. So we'll start with councillors. Does anybody have any questions around the table? Yes, Councilor Mink.
Thank you. I should have asked this in Works and Engineering portfolio. Could you share just a brief update on the status or Director Davidson of Walker Road?
Yes, Walker Road. I'm looking at Director Davidson. I believe the answer is that there was a delay related to a curb that was not put in correctly, that needed to be redone, but that paving is expected to be completed this week, and you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. There you go.
And not just the delay, otherwise, could you give an update on how the project went? I'm sure there's a couple of good news stories.
Overall, it is a good news story. There was some, there was an error made in the curb... There was some, there was an error made in the curb. And when the lay it was done for the curb, the curb was laid and had to be replaced. But that was now done and overall it was a successful project.
Any other questions from around the council table? Okay, I see we have a. Do you want to go ahead? Just please reintroduce your name for the record.
Yeah, Erica Hamm, Northumberland County. So I have a question for every member of council. Given the whole sleeping cabin issue and everything, I appreciate how tough of a decision it is. But I know we can do more as a group. I wanted to know, has every member of council written our local MPP demanding more funding and help? Because this is a systemic problem. I agree. You have individuals that have mental health issues, addiction issues and whatnot. What better way to help these individuals with hospital treatment, rehab treatment, other mental treatments that they can obtain? I know our lack of money in our township isn't like anything new for any other township. But again, that's part of my first question. Have we written our MPPs for support? Are we demanding accountability on their part? Like they can't just say and wipe their hands and say it's our problem now. Like we obviously need help and I just want to know if the council has moved forward with that and if they're going to keep advocating and be that squeaky wheel and.
You know, the situation and we've we've all spoken, I believe. But, you know, getting money brought forward, as you know, is not a quick and easy thing at any level of government and across any of the spectrums. But point taken and we'll keep we'll keep moving forward on it.
Okay, may I comment back to councillor Les Sanders? I can't speak for everybody else on Facebook, so my comments meant no disrespect. I'm just saying squeaky wheel gets the grease. I know myself, when I've called and written David's office, I get ignored for anything. And I literally have to call the Office of the Integrity of Commissioner for them to call him to have him call me back. So with the struggles I go through, that's why I was saying like every day. Like it's not just something that you write once and you forget about. I'd like to see everybody strongly advocating. I appreciate what the deputy mayor was saying, like I agree. Money doesn't come just whenever you want it, you have to work for it. And that's why I'm saying like if we outline our proposals and and explain to them why we need that money and highlight the fact we've lost our hospitals and we've lost whatever other infrastructure we've lost over the years and our facilities. You know, like in Whitby, we used to have Whitby Psych, you know, and then they closed that down, right? So it's like, I think there's a lot of avenues that we could have, but we just don't. So that's why I'm saying, will you continue to advocate daily or weekly, at least a bare minimum of weekly, to write our local MPPs?
Thanks. I'd like to just continue going around so everybody can answer. Councillor Collins.
I can speak for most of the councillors and some of the statements. Everybody up here has the passion in regards to problem solving this crisis, period. That's a fact. I can state that. I can also state the other second to this. This council has exhibited thinking outside the box normally. We have exceeded where we believe that the status quo is just a solve here. We've made, we've contacted numerous federal agencies, provincial agencies, when some in the community have labeled us rogue in doing so and going parameters of play. That has been exhibited and a lot of community members can say yes, they have. So that's a testament to the zeal, if you will, that this council has absolutely. Now, as already stated, it's not going to be fixed overnight. But having said that, and the deputies already said, and as well as other councillors, are we making progress? Yes. And I'm going to suggest to you that the mayor and others have hinted at a robust working model that will hopefully come to fruition, as the mayor has said, in a short term.
I won't comment on the lobbying other tiers of government. But to your question, your point about can we make that a requirement for all new development to have a certain number of units put aside for affordable housing? I hope that you will all continue to ask that question as we move into 2024. At some point, I think we're still expecting 2024 to be the year we tackle our new official plan. And that provides us with an excellent opportunity to have those conversations and to decide as a community what kind of requirements we want for how we grow and how we develop our future here together. So when that comes forward, I hope that you'll be back here at the mic reminding us of that question and helping to mobilize support for those kinds of measures so that we can put that into policy.
So Mink?
Thank you. So you brought up a lot of good points. And the question that you've asked, are we emailing daily? That's a very good question. For me, no, I don't. But I'm not, I don't undermine the value in that suggestion that you bring forward. But I think it's it's important to acknowledge that as a community, we can all play a different role. There can be those who email daily. There can be others who do other things. And I think collectively, if everybody plays their part, then we're coming together as a community. The comment that you had made about more and more services being offloaded to the municipality? Absolutely. 100%. You're right. And we struggle at this level. You'll see in our budget, as the comments you made, the huge budgets, that that those costs don't go away. They're shifting to us and now we have to make solutions. And then, of course, we're bound to policies that are regulated above us. So it's it's tough. This council has definitely made a lot of recommendations. We have asked our own staff to come up with solutions of any type of dwelling, not just additional residential units, but what about what about yurts? What about tiny homes? What about these other types of solutions? And we've asked for that from our staff. We've asked, we've had developers who are coming forward with actually building additional residential units within new builds. So we're making that progress. It may not be known out there that this is happening, but I feel confident. We do have further, we have a lot further to go. But yeah, thank you for that that suggestion. I honestly didn't think of emailing daily. That hasn't crossed my mind, but thank you.
So I work with with the county frequently in regards with this. But to answer your question, no, I haven't messaged Minister Pacini. Not about this. We've talked about a lot of different things, but not about this. And it is definitely something that I can bring up to him the next time I do speak with him. And as I say, I work with the county frequently on this situation. We've got a lot to do still. There's a there is a lot to do and and it won't be quick. But we do need to work on some more permanent solutions. And I am quite confident in this council that we will be working on those solutions to have them a lot sooner than most people would think.
I'll just weigh in finally with with just actually maybe a bit of a list of things that have happened because of the work of this council, because of the pressure put on different levels of government. So that, you know, as we all know, homelessness is a very complex issue and it has many different dimensions, including health dimensions. So one of the things, as you've heard, we're trying very hard to reopen the walk-in clinic here in Port Hope and to have within that clinic access to counselling services. That has not been a straightforward line. And there we do face a lot of misinformation about the clinic. So I'm just going to take the opportunity to say that there are no user fees for this clinic and that the focus is on unrostered patients, of which there are more than 4,000 across Northumberland County. The second thing that I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago is that I brought forward at the county table a pilot study to bring a different model of drug and mental health treatment into the community by focusing on some of the providers that we have across Northumberland County, which fall outside of our public system, unfortunately. But creating a public-private partnership that would not only bring more community beds to our availability, but to bring together county resources, provincial resources to fund this pilot so that we can provide treatment to 15 to 30 individuals in a six-month period of time. And that has been well received by the Associate Minister of Mental Health and Addictions. We're waiting to hear an update and it will be brought forward to the county table for funding in this budget season. As we all know, the best prevention or the best response to some of these issues is prevention and upstream efforts. And I have been working for over one year and some of those meetings have involved councillor Adam and councillor Mink and councillor Claire to bring a youth wellness hub to Northumberland County that would be situated here in Port Hope, would actually provide our youth from 12 to 25 with wraparound services ranging from mental health to addictions to employment support to education. Basically, one stop place to help our youth build the tools and resilience so that they can actually be our positive future and that we can provide them with with the skills that they need to to move forward. And that's not an insignificant project. And we're hoping that we'll get word on that in in the coming weeks and the coming months. It does involve over 25 service organizations from across Northumberland County and has involved community consultations across the county, including with youth and their families, sharing the kinds of things that they would need. And we've we've talked about the wellings success. Yeah, maybe it's not a huge thing, but it's a small step in the right direction. It's the first time we've had that success with a developer in this community. We continue to press the province to release land that is held by the province in this community so that the county can move forward with housing projects and so that we can have more development on that land. And there are continuous developments between the municipality and the county and at the county for solutions, understanding that, no, we don't have the luxury of time and that it is it is an absolute emergency. So those are some of the things that have been worked on through advocacy, through communication and through asking all for more support and more resources from all the different levels of government.
Thank you. I just, I have a follow-up question to one of your comments. But before I get to that, for councillor Mink, you had made the comment that together, when we all communicate the issue, we can get a better response. And I don't disagree with that at all. I think the voice of one, when you call or write, usually equates to 10 or more people. So I think it has a huge impact. But with that said, given that this council represents our community and our ratepayers and that we're all imploring you to help find us solutions, I think it's critical that you all write even weekly, maybe not daily. That might be an unrealistic expectation. But if you all write every week and say, our constituents are looking for answers. We're looking for support. I think it means a lot more coming from our local representatives in addition to our own pleas privately that we've sent on our own. So I'd like to reiterate, I would love to see council writing at least weekly to David and being that thorn in his side because the more we bother him, who knows? You know, what's the worst he's going to say is no? If we don't ask, we're not even going to get a no. We might get a maybe or hear something. My second question for you, Olma, you had referenced this program with the county with councillor Mink and Claire and Anderson. What is the proposed budget that that program looks at? Like I understand it's not just us and it's in conjunction with other townships.
So let me clarify, this is not a county initiative. It is a provincially funded program called the Youth Wellness Hubs of Ontario. You can look at it on on the website and it would require zero financial contribution from the municipality. There are a number of hubs that exist across Ontario in different communities. We just simply don't have one east of Toronto. The closest one is in Kingston. And the model of all the other hubs is they engage in fundraising for any additional supports. And so there is no financial ask of the municipality.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll leave it with, I'll kind of be a bit of a smart butt here. If you guys are considering an extra $4 million for Walden Street, I'm sure we can find other money for our homeless population and other alternatives here too.
Just to clarify, we voted no on that additional $4 million.
No, I appreciate, but I'm just saying, if you're considering it, I'm just saying.
My name's Yvonne O'Neill and I'm a resident of Port Hope and a proud partner in this sleeping cabin collective. I fully appreciate the compassion that all of you have and I know that your hearts are in the right place. I listened tonight to what you had to say and I've heard lots of comments like, we need to think outside the box, we need to find alternate solutions, we need to get everybody to help, we need to engage the community. You had a chance to do that tonight and you didn't. And my question to you is, why not? What about tonight? What about people who have nowhere to sleep tonight and tomorrow night? And in December and in January? Because all the solutions that you're supporting take a long time. This is an immediate solution for someone tonight. And you said no. Why? Why do you say one thing and then you act differently?
Thank you for that question. I I think that we went around the table and everybody had an opportunity to express their their point of view on on this particular motion. Is there any anybody else that would like to add anything to answering this question?
How about the question about what about tonight? What are people supposed to do tonight?
I I'm going to let councillor Collins answer this. And I don't want to get into a debate this evening about county services, what's available, what's not, what's not available? Because I don't think that that's going to be a conversation that there's going to be any agreement on. But I'm going to, I'm going to, and I and I don't need. It's not, this is not a, I don't find this a funny matter at all. I think it's a really serious matter and I think we're all speaking very much truthfully from from the heart. And so I'm going to pass it over to councillor Collins.
Thank you again for, it's a it's a good question. So the motion this evening was specific to 3200 County Road 10. That's the one that was declined by this council. It was not a movement by council to say nay or negative to the sleeping cabins holistically. We are saying no, not at Welcome. It was, and I'm not, this is not in regards to Claire. This is, there was a variety of questions that are unanswered currently to go through that temporary planning process for Welcome. The immediate need from what we were, what I understood, anyway, I'll speak from a single, was for seniors and they had the luxury, and I say it's luxury or the privilege, of transportation because Welcome is an isolated area. The immediate need was identified and rectified. If that has been said, then this Welcome location is not an ideal spot for the sleeping cabins going forward. So that is, I can only speak as an individual here. So that is, I believe, mine and some others. So I hear your question. The question, though, it was not tonight about sleeping cabins. It was about 3200 County Road 10.
Councillor Claire.
I just wanted to provide one comment. I think one of the things that happened is that there was there was a comment shared at our last meeting about the intake process at county and the offerings that are there. And I think a lot of people heard that and mistakenly understood that to mean that the two individuals that have been screened for potential residents in these sleeping cabins have access to those other opportunities. And I think my understanding from my discussions with all of you is that that is not, in fact, the case, that these individuals have already been through that intake process. One of them is already on the named list, already has a caseworker, and has already tried transition house. I believe both have. These are not opportunities that meet their needs. I think, if we're honest, we all probably have a fear of what we see happening in the community to the east of here. And I would argue that I think a lot of the individuals experiencing homelessness in our community share those fears and probably feel just as uncomfortable with the thought of sharing accommodation with people with much higher acuity needs, including addiction and mental health challenges. And I understand that many residents would choose to stay in their car despite the risks, to sleep rough and pursue other options, because they also do not feel safe and comfortable in the in the with the shelter that is offered to them through social services. So I think in these conversations, it's really nuanced, and it is complex, and sometimes what we say can be construed as meaning something that isn't, in fact, the case, even though it's well, you know, it's very well-intended, and certainly, you know, knowing about how to access the services through the county is a very important step, right? And making sure that that's taking place. But I imagine that probably had some influence on the decision that this council took tonight.
My follow-up question, then, is, if not George Hamilton, where? If you support the cabins, where would you suggest we go?
I'm not sure that I can answer that question, because we haven't had an opportunity to to discuss that at this council table. I know that we've had conversations, however, about having a more fulsome conversation about all the different options that are available to deal with the issue of homelessness, not just one option, that there are many in front of us, that we need to actually have a comprehensive conversation about so that we can understand where do we prioritize time and resources and and efforts as well.
And and it's important to consider timing as well. I totally agree that a better solution is long-term, but it's also a long ways away from happening, and folks are suffering now. So we need to think about what can we do now until those other things are available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Robert Frickson. I'm impacted by the decisions on the cabins. However, this is democracy in action. So this is a great forum to demonstrate democracy. And the point of the councilman about the location, I agree with a lot of his points. They have to be addressed, and I don't know what to say. I'm a loss for words, but we move forward. What can we do together? What can we do? What can we do together to move this forward? So the cabins are not happening now, but tonight I have to figure out where to sleep. Yeah, it's cold, but I'll figure it out. So the misinformation that you had the about the transition house and and the lack of support, I can fully have meetings with you all and and give you the hands-on exactly what's happening, right? And the choice is not going there. I respect the Charter, Chapter Seven. The courts have decided that, for me, I need suitable accommodation, which is safe, right? Security of the person, Chapter Seven. It's not secure at transition house. There's a drug issues, it's not safe, I've been there. The other individual who's not here tonight, who would benefit from the cabins, they'll come, their solutions will be found, right? And I'll figure it out tonight, right? I have to. The choices, if I don't, are grim, right? So what's the temperature today or tonight? Hypothermia starts at six degrees. So if it goes below, I'm already at a risk factor. I've taken up, the police service has saved me six times over the winter. I've been to emergencies, I've experienced mild hypothermia this week, I expiled hypothermia where I'm shaking, and I have no breath, and it comes right here, it locks, and you're going, and you have no breath. And by some miracle, it opened up. So right here, I had no breath, right? So I know, I experienced what it is to be outside, and I have a thousand nights in this community, a thousand nights. I went through all my savings, and I reached out for help. I've got some help, but not what I need. But I'll figure it out. And the other gentleman who's not here, he's in the forest tonight. I'm concerned about him. He's self-isolating, right? And when you're in your own thoughts, bad things can happen. I'm worried about him. Me, I'll figure it out, I have to. If I don't, the coroner's going to see me. So I'm going to figure it out, and I like to work with council. I'm a good resource for you, and I can tell you the boots on the ground, how the impact. And the thing is, I respect your vote today. This is democracy. I'm disappointed, but we've got to move forward. We've got to say, okay, we're all agreeing, homelessness issues, it's a major problem. So we're addressing those issues, and it's just going to take a little bit longer, right? And I've been welcomed in this community, this is my home. I've changed my my license, I'm a Port Hope resident for a thousand nights. I've chosen this resident, this place, this is where I want to live, because I have a community support behind me. So what I'm asking is, I respect the the councilman's vote today, it's not what I wanted to hear, but he has absolutely valid points that have to be addressed. And also, that's democracy. So I respect that, right? And the individual here, he didn't really give me an answer why he voted that way. So we could have a conversation, if you like, not now, but in the future, and maybe we could sway that vote on another time. But tonight, my question would be, what reason, I know we don't have the resources tonight, but I'm going to figure it out, and maybe you have suggestions for me. Figure it out. Where do I stay tonight? Could I stay right here in the parking lot? And if we're looking at the the judge's decision in the Waterloo case, if I don't have a reasonable place to live or stay, I'll park outside. Am I able to use electricity outside? So I can cook maybe a coffee in the morning, I can get a portable heater and stay warm. So the cost would be, what, seventy-five cents to keep me alive tonight? There's a plug right there outside. I'll park my car, I'll talk to the police. I have good relations with the police department, they know of me, they keep an eye on me, right? I'm proactive, I have to be proactive to stay alive. So this is my one tool, I may not need it tonight, but it's a good thing. If you see my car there, I'm respectful, mindful of my location, I don't litter, I don't take drugs, nothing, right? I have community support at the McDonald's, the lady knows me, I get a free coffee sometimes. So the judge says I could stay, so I may take that to heart tonight. If I don't have available option, my car will be there, maybe in the daytime, when it's minus, when the temperatures are low. Library's a good resource, but when you're tired, I got to rest. So if you see me, if you want to talk to me, I'm here, right? And again, democracy. I thank you for this forum, you're wonderful folks, you are compassionate on this issue, and we'll meet again at this forum or over a coffee, my treat. I might even use the Northumberland eats cards, right? So I have, I have to, we'll do it together. I'm not alone, I'm not alone here with all of you. I thank you for listening. If you have a question for me, we can wrap this up. I know everybody wants to maybe go home, but your votes, they have an impact. They have an impact on me tonight, but I'll figure it out. Thank you very much.
Robert, thank you for for coming up and and asking the questions and and sharing your experiences. I certainly found spending the time with you yesterday at county for a couple hours that we were there very informative, and I would like to speak to you once once we finish. But I would like to actually pass it on to Councillor Collins first.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And Robert, you're not going to be sleeping in the parking lot tonight, that I can guarantee. And I don't know what the conversation is going to be with Madam Mayor, but I will stay behind for a short term. I have to be very careful with what I'm about to say here. There are enough community members out there that, once and I need is identified for an individual such as yourself. Now, there are, as we said, it's very complex, not everybody's like you that is at this state. I wouldn't think you would agree with me. Having said that, there are community members out there that support others who do not wish to be identified currently. I know that's very encrypted, but I have to leave it at that, trust me. I know you will not be out in the cold tonight. I wish I could extend it personally, I cannot for other reasons, but I will stay behind with the mayor. I know there are other community members out there that will support you pending requirements. This is where the community comes together. But I'm going to stay behind, I know I'm very encrypted here.
The community here is fantastic, yeah.
And and I'd love to personally, but I cannot anymore, okay? So I will stay behind, and I will be a mechanism to go a little bit sideways here. Thanks, stay behind.
Councillor Clare. Yeah, I just wanted to to also say thank you, Robert. I think it's really important that more more members of our community have the opportunity to to meet and and speak with people with lived experience of homelessness, to try to, I think, dismantle some of the fears and biases that we that we hold and the assumptions that we we, I think, sometimes make about people who are unhoused, simply by nature of being unhoused. And I think you being here this evening and being just part of our community as you are is a is, I think, important, and I think that will have resonated with a lot of people, and I think a lot of people will be reflecting on that. So thank you for being here and for coming to the podium and for, you know, sharing your voice and being part of the conversation. And I'm sorry that we weren't able to to get you a cabin this evening, but we'll keep working.
Thank you, Robert.
Hi, Alistair McKeating from White Drive in Port Hope. I am, as, I'm very disappointed in the decision, even though I knew it was coming. I am disappointed in the end, in the reasons. I'm exasperated as someone who has tried to lead this this agenda for the last eight or nine months. I just do not, I cannot figure out how to, so my question is, how do how do we, as a as a citizens' organization, how do we present information at the right time for council to make a decision? Les is back at, is it the only solution? Are there better solutions? Adam thinks there are better solutions. Chris thinks there are too many questions. Vicky says, agree in principle, but not this location. Llena's approval in principle, no, no government has got it right. What I, what it looks to me like we are back at square one, and I don't understand the planning, about the planning process, about the point of this motion tonight was to get us to the point where we could explore, confirm the location, look at other locations, look at the questions, figure out what the answers were, how to address liability, it'd be addressed by a licensing agreement, which we don't have the authority to negotiate with yet. So my question is, how do, how can we possibly come back and revisit this situation where we won't just get to, geez, I'm just not sure, I can't vote for it? How do we, how do we get, how and when do we get the information to you to make a decision?
Thank you, Alistair, for that for that question. I think it's an important one, and maybe one of the things that I will suggest in terms of continuing the conversation and moving things forward is bringing this to the intermunicipality committee that's been struck. Also, as I understand it, this idea has not been brought to county, to the Social Services Committee in the last little while. And so the the suggestion is to that it is, it is brought back forward into that into that space for continuing conversations and collaborations. And I just want to note that we're talking about a different county council composition now than has existed previously. And I think as much as we're asking questions of of this council and what's happening at the Northumberland County level, that 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 is one of the things that I think can continue to keep this conversation alive.
I'm not so much interested in keeping the conversation alive as I am in finding a solution to this. My understanding is the county does not have land. That's why we came to the lower-tier municipalities in Coburg and here, so that they can make bylaw changes that would enable this.
I would suggest that there is more flexibility there than that, and and I would, I would suggest that there is another delegation to the Social Services Committee and to county because there, the situation is not static, it is constantly evolving, and it's not evolving at a snail's pace.
So for clarity, to the county social services or to the intermunicipality?
To the to the county social services committee, to the committee.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone, for all your time. It's actually really dangerous, me standing behind a pulpit, sorry, Ben Mills, Port Hope, it's dangerous me standing behind a pulpit, but I won't take much of your time. I heard a lot of not thirty-two-hundred, County Road Ten, not thirty-two-hundred, but in favor of sleep cabins. Is this something that could be sent back? Because I heard there was other, like, other options within our municipality for sleep cabins. Is this something that council would be in favor of sending back to say, well, where could we make this happen within our municipality? I'm just wondering if that's that's a possibility at all with with the conversation around sleep cabins.
I'm going to turn it over to the to the two councillors that brought forth the motion.
I would certainly be interested in exploring alternative locations. You know, this is, as I've made said in my remarks, the last two meetings, you know, we were presented with a report, there were four options presented. There were four options presented. Three of them had pretty significant barriers from a planning process and were not likely to make it through a planning process, floodplain, things like that, that are policy level issues. This one was the one with the lowest barriers, so this is the one we gave a shot. But I don't think that we've had, you know, we've exhausted all pieces of land owned by the municipality and I certainly would support our continued thinking about a more appropriate location.
I agree. I think if not here, then we should be looking at other locations for sure.
And I would just add that there is a lot of community support for this and there's private property.
For sure. You know, as a pastor of a church, I, you know, we rent and we know the difficulty of finding a place that works well and stuff and wish that we had some property that we could do something with for that. And, but yeah, thank you for all your time and work in all of this.
Hi, Deborah Owen, Francis Street in Port Hope. If the underused land, municipally-owned land at 3200 County Road 10 is deemed not suitable for sleeping cabins, even though the council decided not to do the actual investigation into why it's not suitable, rather just jump to that conclusion, but that's just my aside. But if it's deemed as not suitable for sleeping cabins, then how can council and Port Hope planning get creative about how that underused land could actually provide housing probably deeply affordable and/or for unhoused people? How can we get creative because we have this chunk of land? So how can we use it to house people?
I'm going to turn over the issue of George Hamilton's goal to our acting CAO if you want to comment on this, Brian.
I think it's a question for council. I think consideration of the municipalities pursuing for your direction, land inventory strategy, it's going to open up opportunities with respect to municipal property. Your direction provided to us was to look for opportunities to dispose of land that could be created for affordable housing opportunities. I am very confident that the land inventory strategy for George Hamilton will ultimately be at least a recommendation for your consideration, that we go to market with George Hamilton. It was acquired for a specific purpose that didn't pan out. That's all pending future council direction, but there are certainly constraints on the property, water constraints, physical constraints, that would all have to be overcome. But to the broader question of how we can get creative on that specific property, I don't think I have an answer here tonight.
Counselor Les?
Slightly off topic, but I don't know how long you've been in this area, but at one point, behind the en route, there was a trailer park for many, many years that housed, and I was never there, but I'm thinking 15 to 20 trailer units and it was quite successful. And for a number of reasons, nothing to do with the municipality, it was more a relationship problem between husband and wife or husband and girlfriend, it disappeared. But if we were really serious, and Adam and I have chatted in theory about this, is if we were really serious and we provided the funding for a number of trailers on a private property run by a person that, or people that understand how a trailer park works, such as, and we have experience in Hamilton Township with those people. It wouldn't be, would it be the best solution? No. Would it be a solution? Yes. Would it be better than sleeping cabin? Absolutely. Would it be more permanent? Yes. The impediment is, would the municipality or the county step up to a debenture to buy 15 or 20 trailers and help establish this? And I don't mean just for quote homeless. I mean, it's got to be an integrated social society that resides on something like this, but that could be a potential solution if there was the will of council and the will of county, the will of the province.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you. And I really do. When I first heard about sleeping cabins, I was like, that's ridiculous. It's such a short-term solution. Like, how could that even work upon investigation and listening to people? Yeah. I mean, I don't know who said it and I don't know the exact phrase, but perfection is the enemy of good. We're never getting perfection. We could probably settle for okay and house a lot of people. So, thank you.
Thank you for your question and comments. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, so it is time to conclude our business to be covered on today's agenda. We've reached the end of our agenda today, 9:44 PM, and I am in a position to adjourn. Thank you.